Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, how are you?
I am doing great. This is Clayton, and I'm phoning in today, so glad to be here.
I forgot to turn my speaker on.
Right.
There you go. Okay. All right, hi Clayton, Nathan, and it looks like James is on too. We're going to call to order the special meeting of the Workforce Housing Advisory Committee. So, do we, I don't think we have, will we have guests from the, from Mesa, I believe, online? Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Colin Krueger and Seth Heller.
Somebody said that you don't pronounce it Mesa, you pronounce it Misa, is that right? I just want to make sure.
No, Mesa, Mesa.
Okay, all right.
Colin, how are you, sir?
Is that Tim? See, I listened to your show, Mayor, and that's what Tim said on your show. And what did I do? I walk into my own meeting and I look like a fool because I listen. Don't listen to the mayor's show, that's what we want them to do. Okay, thanks, Tim.
I pronounce it Mesa.
Mesa?
Mesa, there you go, all right.
I think, I thought you said Misa on your call on the show, so those things.
I never said Misa.
Okay, well.
That's like you're going to mass or something.
It's not affiliated with me, that's all that we care about.
What was that, James?
I thought it was Tim has a problem with my accent, I think that's what it was.
Okay, all right. All right, so you have the agenda before you, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Come here. I'll second that.
Okay, we probably need attendance, don't we? So, Samantha, would you do roll call for us?
Chairman Oberhuel.
Present.
Member Brooks. Member Russ.
Here.
Member Alred.
You're here, attending by phone.
Member Keenan. Member Thomas.
Present.
And recorded absent is Member Meeks. They need you to have a quorum, Chairman.
All right, thank you so much. Would you like to certify the meeting for open meetings?
Yes, I do certify that this meeting has been published in accordance with the Opens Meeting Act and Resolution 2021-01.
All right, thank you. You have before you, the, do we have the minutes? Were they sent out?
No, the minutes were not sent out from the regular meeting.
Okay. And then we will go into new business discussion of the possible action and request by Mesa Apartments LLC and participation in land or cash for the affordable housing development at 1100 Meacham Drive. Samantha, would you like to present that?
Yes, thank you Chairman. Today, we are presenting to you all a discussion and possible action on a request from Mesa Apartments for participation in land and/or cash for the affordable housing development at 1100 Meacham Drive. With us, we have Colin Krueger and Seth Heller, and they'll run through the presentation as well as show to you all a mock site plan of their conceptual development.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, I'll pass it to you all.
From Mesa, would you like to take, I'm not sure who's presenting today, so.
Yeah, so it's Seth Heller and Colin Krueger. What we're going to do, if that's okay, I'm going to, I'm going to put a presentation on the Zoom so that we could, we could go through the conceptual plan and the overall understanding of the development. Does that work for you guys?
That'll be fine.
Okay, hold on one second. Okay, so I think everybody could see my, my screen. So Colin, why don't you start us off on the understanding of the site, and then I'll get to, I'll work, I'll work it back and forth.
Okay, yeah. Anyway, good morning, everybody, thanks for the opportunity. You know, we'll start at a high level, obviously, we're looking at a site the city's identified that we've gone through on the conditional use permit. 5.53 acres, 1100 Meacham. And our goal is to secure 9% low-income housing tax credit equity award. A competitive process to build 56 units, that's the current plan today, a workforce housing project. A approximate budget of about 15 million, and we are asking the city today for a number of items for assistance, so we'll get through in detail as we get through this presentation. You know, just to go back to the fact sheet that we, that the city put out, the village put out, you know, talking about, you know, who we're targeting in the workforce as a support to the overall economy of the village, the fact that we're.
Colin, can you hold on just for a second?
We can't. Yes.
Your screen is, is way too small, maybe you can zoom in? Need to zoom in more?
Be with us.
Yeah, thank you for that, Tim, I was thinking that to myself, and I can barely see that too.
Yeah.
Thought I was just getting older. I was like, oh man.
I know, I forgot my glasses, but yeah, that's a little better.
Oh, that's better, yeah.
So this, if you, if you recall, this was the fact sheet that was put out by the village, really to talk about what our target market is, you know, folks who work in the fields of retail, hospitality, medical, and education, government employees, including police and firefighters. And just to reiterate that, you know, there is, this is not a, you know, subsidized project in the sense of project-based Section 8 subsidies or anything of that nature. This is a development that will require typical rent qualifications. All applicants, applicants are going to be required to have a job or income. The government essentially pays no rent subsidies, and all of the applicants for, you know, for a unit will have to pass a typical credit check and a criminal background check.
Okay.
So, you know, in, in the project, we're assuming, you know, our target, because of the, the way that the, the tax credits work, our target is from 50 to 60 units, which is the maximum that you will get an award in the state of New Mexico for a, a 9% tax credit deal. We'll be targeting, you know, 5% or lower of, you know, lower the extreme income. And, and Colin will walk you through the development specifics to the actual village and all that type of stuff, so.
Right, so really, you know, as Seth mentioned, you know, probably three or four units we're going to target to lower-income folks with really veterans and disabled priority. And that's a, obviously, we want to do that for the community, but that's also a way for us to get additional points in the process with the New Mexico Finance Authority. But the bulk of the development, as it mentions there, is to target folks, you know, with average incomes, really. And, you know, rents are going to range between 600 and 700 for a one-bedroom per month, 750 to 850 for a two-bedroom, and I think it was about 950 for a three-bedroom. So pretty competitive rent levels for folks that will be affordable compared to what's in the market currently.
What was the one-bedroom again?
Ranges between 600 and 700 dollars per month.
Great.
Yeah, and.
For, for a brand-new product, you can't beat it within the market, that's kind of the point. We're going to be delivering a brand-new product to the market, and those rents will be what, what is under the HUD, the National Program, for HUD to keep them what is known as affordable at, you know, at any one particular period of time for that area.
Okay.
One, one thing we, we, we are sort of passionate about is providing good outcomes for children, so we're going to really insist that this be a non-smoking facility, and that's really consistent with our overall mission of our company. And in fact, you know, most of the public housing throughout the United States is going no smoking in general, over the last few years, anyway. Just high-level, I think everybody on this call kind of knows where the piece of property is. We're just highlighting it here, survey, and then our architect put together some, some renderings of kind of our preliminary site planning and some of the elevation drawings, and we'll go through some of those. Please ask questions as we go through. But, you know, just from a big-picture standpoint, we've tried to preserve as much of the natural trees and resources that are there, and try to make this as minimal impact to, you know, the general environment and, as possible. So I think you'll get a sense of that as we kind of go through some of these elevation drawings and site plan drawings. We're proposing a mix of two- and three-bedroom buildings. The, you know, the, on the Meacham side, it's, it's going to be the three-story, and then towards the back more of the two-story layouts, that's what we're planning at this point. That gives you a sense of the overall site plan.
Nice-looking.
Yeah, we're working with an architect out of Albuquerque, Jeeves and Zuzu, who is actually the architect on another project that we have in Albuquerque, and they really do nice work, very good quality product. They're actually a review architect firm for the finance agency as well, so they, they get to see and review all of the submissions and applications that come in. So, we really think we have the best of breed in terms of the right folks on this particular job. This is preliminary budget, sources and uses, it is subject to change, but I just wanted to kind of take everybody through it, so they, so you guys have a sense of how these, the capital stack and everything would work. Right now.
The biggest thing is the sources of funds that are different, right? So, there's a certain amount of tax credit equity that would be requested through this program that we would do.
Colin.
Yeah.
Colin, hold on a second, can you guys email over your, your presentation? It's hard for us to see it, so we can get this printed out real quick?
Yeah, no problem.
Seth, can you do that?
Just before you proceed on with your presentation, until we get this printed out, let me make a few statements, just, you know, for the, for the board, and then that way you get a chance to email this presentation, semantic and print it before we proceed with the presentation. Mr. Chairman, are you okay with that?
Yes, that's fine.
Yeah, so I'm sorry to interrupt, but it's hard to see the presentation, so.
Okay.
As, as we get into the agenda on this action, you know, we're, we're going to be asking the housing board and, and staff is prepared to make recommendations to the housing board in accordance with the Affordable Housing Act, in accordance with the Affordable Housing Plan that has been approved by the governing body and which the board is, is charged with administering, to make a recommendation to the governing body that we enter into a land lease agreement and a project participation agreement with, with Mesa Apartments. And we've provided those two documents to you, they're still under legal review, so the, the documents that we have given to you, they're draft, Zach and I have read through these this morning. And Zach, just, you know, before, and we hear the rest of the presentation, you know, I just want Zach to make sure that he's assuring the board that the actions that are being recommended today are in accordance legally with the Affordable Housing Act and Affordable Housing Plan so that you're comfortable making those recommendations. Is that, you want to talk about that, Zach?
Sure, Tim, you and I met this morning, and, and we were going over this, and you stopped our conversation and said you wanted me to, to make sure that all this is on the up and up with regard to our ordinance as well as the state statutes. So I broke off and reviewed our, the village ordinance and, and as well as the Affordable Housing Act under our state statutes, and everything is, everything is compliant with the law that you guys are looking at and contemplating.
Yes, and as, so as we get into it, you know, there's basically going to be a request from Mesa Housing to enter into the land agreement or the long-term lease agreement with the property. With that agreement, it's a, a 99-year lease that we're going to be recommending to the governing body to agree to, and, and in addition to that, we're taking an equity position, and we'll be receiving back 15% of the, of the gross revenues will come back in and put back into the housing trust. Unlike the previous agreements that we've entertained, as it's been a straight grant or a straight lease, but this lease does propose cash coming back to the village. When we get into the, the participation, they're going to be asking for an additional million dollars, and they're going to be asking for waiver of fees and then some utility extensions to get to the property. All, all those participation by the village is in accordance with the Affordable Housing Plan that we have and within your authority to make that recommendation. Judy is here to talk a little bit about the financing and how the housing trust fund works and your current cash balance in the housing trust fund. So Judy, you want to certify that for the board?
Yes.
Do you have that yet?
In fiscal year 2021, the council did appropriate a million dollars into a housing fund in order to get the ball rolling, and we did purchase out of that fund the property at $750,000, with the note that as we enter into a new agreement, that fund would be paid back those money, so right now.
Just specifically, Judy, the, the property that was purchased was, is with a, 750 was the one on 600 Meacham, six whatever, so the, the council's commitment was, is that when we consider a project, they would reimburse the housing trust fund that additional 750. So Judy?
So right now, that housing board fund, less, the million less the 750 is down to the 250.
Okay, does anybody have any questions from the committee on that?
You know, Chairman, I actually have a couple of just clarification points, but it's not related to the housing trust, would you mind if I queued those now or?
Yeah, that'd be great, go ahead, Nathan.
And Colin, this may be directed at your team, I just wanted to get some additional clarification, and I may have missed this, but when you had mentioned on the pre-screening, we're going to have criminal background checks, which I certainly agree with, but also on the credit application, can you specifically let us know, are we looking at credit scores or are we looking at a history of, you know, judgments or what, what criteria would you be looking at for those credit scores? And in our experience, a lot of our first-time buyers, you know, in the workforce housing, specifically for service providers, whatever, some of these folks, they don't have established credit, so I'm curious what will be the markers on that criteria?
Seth, do you want to take that?
Yeah, I love your question.
Oh, I think we lost him. You know, that's usually driven at the, you know, we're going to go out for a very, you know, high-class management organization, third-party manager, Nathan, that's going to be, you know, on top of that. And there, they have their own specific, each, each company that we end up dealing with has their own requirements, in, in general speaking. I can give you some, I could probably email you after the call, a sense of what that application looks like and some of the things that they're asking for, but it's typically just a credit run, just to make sure that people are, you know, you know, paying their bills for the most part. I mean, it's not as rigorous as you would see in a market-rate project for the most part, and there's some flexibility there, but at the same time, you know, it is a threshold, right? It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a starting point, you know, to, to identify folks that are actually going to be able to pay the rent, so.
Sure.
It's, I think I'll follow up with you after the call, if that's okay, and send you some, some follow-up information as to kind of what's on, on those typical applications.
No, I certainly do appreciate that. And my second clarification question, and I may have missed this in the beginning of the presentation, I was trying to find that, I know we were referring to some, you know, low-income tax credits, I understand that, and I'm just curious, for, for the other units, what is the criteria, are we utilizing MFA's or will there be like an income cutoff? So if I'm making, you know, $100,000 a year and I'm employed, am I going to be able to rent there, or is there going to be a cutoff of, you can't make $40,000 or?
Yeah, we're, we're looking at, you know, we're trying to look at this, and, and it's not fully baked, right? So we, we're still working on, you know, the, the application is due at the end of January, so we still are sort of putting our plan together. And, you know, the MFA gives you points, for example, for 15% of the units to be market-rate. So in those cases, those 15% of those units could be completely unrestricted. The balance of the units that are covered by the tax credit, and that's a denominator of the number of, you know, let's call it workforce housing units as a percentage of the total development, those typically are going to range, you know, right around average, around 60% of average median income. So we're going to have a sort of a range of, of median incomes for this project. Some would be unrestricted, some might be very low income to, for the veterans' preference and for disabled folks' preference, and then the balance of the workforce housing units more at, at an overall average of about 60% AMI.
Okay, and that was my primary concern, is that at least, you know, more than 50% of the project is going to be available for our working class, you know.
Absolutely.
The base, that's where I feel like the main struggle is, not that we don't want to help the, you know, retirees or fill in the blank or disabled folks, but I just appreciate that clarification.
No, and, and later in this presentation, we're going to talk very specifically about what those 60% AMI rents are, those are the.
Okay.
At the high level, we talked briefly about the ranges of the one-bedrooms, for example, in the 600 range, will be very specific, and those ranges change, they come out, I think they should be out very shortly, every year they sort of adjust those numbers, so we're not entirely sure exactly what those numbers are going to be, but we can give you some pretty good ranges at this point.
Okay, awesome, thank you for that clarification, Colin.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Colin, maybe we can cover the, until the presentation gets here on paper, maybe we can cover the site plan, because we do have that information in your package. So let's talk about the site plan, and then we'll go back to the presentation once that gets printed, if you're okay with that, Mr. Chair.
That'd be fine.
Yeah, absolutely, so the site plan that we're looking at now, I don't know if you guys can see that. Yeah, so the, the community areas, let's see, that comm building is the community building, that's the, you know, that's where we're going to have an ability, hopefully, to provide some services for the residents, and what the extent of those services, we're still yet to be determined, depending on which partner we, we team up with. But that more than likely is going to be, you know, after-school programs, potentially maybe some classroom facility to provide, you know, English as a second language-type programs, that kind of thing, just a sort of a, a component that I think will add an amenity to the overall project.
Yeah, so the way, the way that the federal tax credits, and especially 9%, that we're going to be going for, for this project work, is that there's a point system, that point system is extremely important for us to be able to win the vouchers. There's a, part of that point system requirement is that we have, we have other services through the project that we have, that we're able to offer. Additional educational services, additional after-school services, things like that. So our recreational building will serve the community, not just our, not just the site, which is extremely important to understand for the project.
Just for my orientation, is the, is Meacham on the left? Is that where upper parking? Yeah, so it's on, it's on the, the left side?
That, that's correct, yeah, that's correct.
Right here.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
And this is the, the, on the right, this is the back of the golf course area that you have.
Okay.
Okay, so there's a major gradient change between the properties, you can see, because this is overlaid on the topo, so these lines here are, is, is kind of reflecting the gradient change on the site. So what we did to non-disturb the area, so we, these buildings D and C are only two stories, so there's no effect of overseeing anybody or any of the community members.
I apologize, we got the paper copy now, so, sorry for the interruption, but I guess you can see it now, so that's all good.
Yeah, we, I mean, we're trying to perceive, you know, preserve as many trees as possible, not only just to, you know, mitigate the, you know, overall impact on the site, but also, you know, it, it'll provide some cover from the streets and, and from the golf course as well, so you're not looking at, at buildings, essentially.
Approximately, how far off the walking trail is Building D?
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, we, to be, to be honest with you, we just got this yesterday.
Okay, okay, no problem. I'm, I'm just, I know those will be some of the potential questions we'll hear from the public on this, so that's why I'm asking.
You know, Todd, I was looking at page seven of 25, where it has a project site, and it looks like the schematics, they fit in the lot lines, and it really gives you a really good bird's-eye perspective of how far that is away from that trail, and it looks like, I mean, it's a, it's a good distance, there's several trees that are left in their site plan to give us a buffer, I don't know if that's up on your screen, but I think that's a better slide to look at.
Seven of 25.
It's the one that has a project site, it's right after the survey.
Oh, he must be in this one. He's in this.
It's the slide prior to the community areas, where it has the actual buildings, and it just has the project site, if I'm looking at that accurately, you can see where they've developed the buildings within that flat map.
Chairman Oberhuel, they will be required to meet setbacks per the C2 code, which is a minimum of 10 feet, but to me, it appears to be much more than the 10-feet minimum.
Yeah, we did, we did it more than 10 feet to keep the environment, the, the non-disturbance of the environment, and to match the overall areas of the setbacks and the set forward, I guess you would say, for the different locations, right, off of Meacham and the back area.
You know, I've seen some nasty hooks come off of that T-box right there, so just want you to know, you might watch your windows, so. Just, just giving you heads up.
Yeah, well, there you go.
I might, I might be accountable for some of those.
Sixty at the same time, now let's get down to it. You firsthand experience.
They're looking here.
Look forward, look forward to try to play that hole, actually.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, this is Clayton Alred, and I have a question for legal counsel. Good morning, Zach, I heard and listened, listened attentive, attentively to your legal review for compliance, I have another area that I'm curious about, and that is anti-donation clause. I also heard the description of the village providing utility connections to the site. Are there any issues with the anti-donation clause with that pending or proposed action?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll take that, if I may, Commissioner, the, the, there's three exceptions to the anti-donation clause in the state of New Mexico. The first is the Local Economic Development Act, what they refer to as LIDA. The second is the Metropolitan Redevelopment Act, and the third is the Affordable Housing Act. And the, in the Affordable Housing Act, municipalities are given the authority to participate with these type of projects without violating the Anti-Donation Act. So Zach, you want to lead into that?
Sure, I, I think you covered the whole thing, in fact, the, the Workforce Housing Act and the statute specifically refers back to, to that, to the anti-donation clause in the, in the Constitution, the New Mexico State Constitution, and that, when, when I was reading that this morning, I thought, well, the Constitution supposedly is the supreme law of the land, so I got confused that may, that was, did the legislature write into a statute something to override the Constitution, but then you go and read that section of the Constitution, and it clearly states that affordable housing is an exception to the anti-donation clause. All right, thank you.
Thank you, that's good information, I appreciate it.
All right, we do have the presentation, so if you want to go back to your normal, what you were looking at doing, we can follow along, we're on paper now.
Okay. I guess there's a couple pictures, as, as you'll see, there are the elevations as well for the, the site, so you can see how the tree lines are above most of the trees, just give you a visual standpoint. a visual standpoint, so it fits the environment. The biggest issue that we wanted to do is the non-environmental impact that you're providing the houses. You see the community building has the same type of look with letting in the light from the side, but yet has a large enough area to be able to do some of the programs that we're talking about. Gives you a different viewpoint. Let me just keep going, so the elevation to the walkways, our construction budget, as we've referenced before, biggest source that you want to pay attention on here is the sources of funds, more than the uses of funds, because uses of funds are pretty much standard to what the market-driven driving forces are, right? The biggest, the biggest thing is the sources of funds. Sources of funds, what we were talking about before, is the tax credit equity, the tax credit equity, you know, allocation is what we're going to be applying for through this process as a partnership with the city. This tax credit equity is a federally funded program, nine percent, that is allocated to the states, and there's a certain amount, because of the LIHTC program, that we're able to obtain for the construction and development. As, as we'll go through, and as Colin will explain further on, the amounts are limited, so what's extremely important to the program is that we offer as many services as possible to be able to get the points necessary to win the allocation. And that includes, that includes this partnership of being able to move it forward, because that is, that is part of the point system, that we, that we would be able to, to be able to move it forward. More things that we'll talk about are bus stops, the community programs that Colin was referencing before, that after-school care, job there, so we could run once a year throughout the, throughout the facility that benefit the overall community, and, and the multifamily housing will not just be for the people that live there, but it's looked at as a community impact project overall, for mostly the benefit of the community. We will have a private loan for any of the gap that will be necessary to fund, besides the contributions that, that, that the city and, and us as developers will be taking. What's known as home is actually a separate state fund, it's a federal program, but it's through the state funds as well, that we're able to, it's a separate bucket of dollars, on federal dollars, that we're able to allocate for our projects as well, which Colin will go into more detail when we get to the next, this next slide. So Colin, why don't you explain?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, at the risk of, you know, simplifying things too much, but the nine percent award that we're going to be applying for is a competitive process, it's, you know, we're competing for dollars, the, the good news is, as a new construction project, we have a slight priority over acquisition rehab-type projects, but it's, you know, it is, it is competitive. The good news is, if this Bring Back Better bill does get passed through the Senate, I know it was approved at the House level this morning, but if it does get through the Senate, then there's going to be additional dollars flowing into New Mexico, and that will even give us, you know, a much better chance of success. MFA does have a new scoring system this year, they've changed some of the categories around, we actually applied for another project last year, so we're very familiar with the system, but they changed the scoring, and it's, it's a bit of an unknown in terms of, it's very hard to compare our project to previous projects that have come before us, and get a sense of, you know, where are we going to score, but I think the function of the way we've structured the deal, the fact that the city is working with us as a participant and partner, and providing things like a bus stop close by, within a quarter of a mile, and with a regular service, will give us, you know, the points that are going to be required in some of these areas. I, I could, I don't know if you, if it makes sense to run through the entire qualified application process, and look at the scoring systems, I think it might be a bit too much for this call, but, you know, we're confident based on the way we scored this project at this point, that we're in pretty good shape to win an award.
We've actually, as a committee, been through the scoring thing several times, I mean, we don't know what the changes that you're referring to might be, but we know the high points of what seem to score more points on the, on the application, so at least historically.
Didn't you mention, Colin, didn't you mention that the developer was involved with the scoring process, or, the architect? Yeah, the arch, yeah, the architect is a review architect for the finance agency, so they get to look at and evaluate and recommend, you know, based on other projects that are coming in, so we have the benefit of being able to, you know, utilize their experience in terms of.
But they're, but they won't be able to, going through that question, though, they'll, they'll have to sit out, just like any, any formal process, government process, for ours, but it's, they, he knows what the city, what the, the state and the federal government are looking for from a finance authority aspect, so that's one of the reasons why we went to him initially, and what ended up, turning out, he is an amazing architect and a great guy, even better person. So we really have enjoyed working with him, and I'll show you some of the other projects that we've done when we get through the presentation, but that, we're hoping that gives us a major step up, especially in this award year, and, and we do believe it will, because he knows exactly the back and forth with the, what they're requiring, and if there needs to be a last-minute change, he's, he'll figure it out, you know.
That's what I felt as well, that that's a good, we're lucky to be with them.
And Seth, just to piggyback off of that really quick, on the revamping of the re-scoring, do you know if there was some weight that was taken away from the midtown district point? I know that in previous projects, we were informed, but if we're not in the midtown district, we basically don't have a chance, and that kind of led us to our last site debacle location, so is that something that we're kind of addressing with this one as well?
Yeah, well, yeah, unfortunately, that one category, we don't, we're not going to be able to check the box there, it's a very specific location category. The other thing that was unfortunate is that the city was approved last year, I believe, or the village was approved for a statistical area, and that category, which was a ten-point, was actually just eliminated. So all that effort to get to the tier one for the city is kind of wasted effort in some sense, that was unfortunate, but we're gonna, we're gonna, we sit down with the MFA prior to Christmas and go through the project, at that point, we'll have our opportunity to express our dissatisfaction with that particular category being eliminated, so that, but notwithstanding, everybody's going to have, it's an even playing field, so, but we, our sense is based on our estimate of scoring, that we're going to be in pretty good shape, we should have enough points. The, the, one of the other issues is, last year, they changed the requirements, they required a market study prior to the applications coming in, and that took a lot of folks by surprise. So, as a result, there were less applications last year, and I think that was the impetus for the finance agency to kind of make it a little less confusing, and the point structure a little simpler, but it actually works, I think, against them in some capacity. So everybody's going to be dealing with the same issues, I think, as a project, we're going to be just fine.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
So going to the unit mix, I think this is an important understanding as well, we have a, we have a certain, these are subject to change, but the amount of units that we're looking at, because it's a soft spot in the city, it's between fifty and sixty, and looking at a three- and a two-story type product, walk-up in that environment, we looked at twenty-two one-bedrooms, twenty-eight two-bedrooms, and six three-bedrooms. That's the rent allocations that you see on the right-hand side, the HUD-approved rents as of this past year, those are reallocated every year, or they're updated every year, and that process is going on right now for this, this next year, but this is as of this past year, that's what the rents would look like for what we call affordable housing.
Yeah, in, in most likelihood, they would probably only increase maybe a factor of two or three percent.
At, at most, at most.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's really a, you know, it's the best tool for creating affordability, because it locks in those rents for a long period of time for people that are part of, you know, working class, which is the hardest thing to be able to provide housing for.
Let me ask a question from the utilities, are the, would the renters be responsible for all utilities, or is it some of that included, how's that work?
Yeah, so there's a certain amount that you're able to charge, it's a great question, that you're able to charge utilities, but essentially, it gets marked off the rent, so there's a total amount that you're able to charge. So you're limited to the total amount, because it has to be a certain percentage of the average income within that particular class.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll get, if it's okay, can I re, can I get back to that at, at the end of the, at the end of the presentation, because I think it shows it again.
Sure, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, one of your board members is going to have to leave at eleven-thirty, sent the text.
Okay.
And he's asking if we can try to call for a motion before that.
Okay.
Okay, so let me, let me just hit that utility charge, and then we'll go through this, the things for the motion, because I know the time is limited. The utility charge is going to be limited, anywhere from fifteen dollars to fifty-five dollars on the utilities, so it is limited. We also, one of the, part of the point system is creating the efficiencies of models within energy, gas, every aspect of it, so we have to have very efficient type of buildings, and for instance, solar panels give you, there's other types of credits you're able to get. In this location, and this amount of units, we will, we'll have efficient units, but I estimate that it's only going to be about a twenty-five to thirty-five dollar utility reimbursable charge at most, so it's very limited to how much you could actually charge on those utilities, going through that question.
Okay.
Okay, Colin, why don't you, why don't you go through the participation, and then I'll take the.
Yep, so, this is, this is our request from the village, we'd like to enter into a long-term ground lease for the site, we're proposing a ninety-nine-year term with a ground rent payable at fifteen percent of the net cash flow of the project as part of the payment consideration for the long-term ground lease. We are, we're looking for an award from the Affordable Housing Land Bank Trust Fund Contribution, really necessitated by the gap that we have in our financing stack, and at this point, that's a million dollars. Some of those funds would, you know, potentially could be reimbursable at closing, you know, once we get a permanent loan in place, so we'll give you some more detail on that as we kind of go down the road, but that's what we're requesting. We're also requesting a market study, which is mandated by the finance agency, seventy-five hundred dollars, that's a prerequisite for the application itself. Number four is the extension of the water and sewer line, it's from the PNC site to the south of us, needs to be brought up to the site. We're requesting utilities to the site, and we take it from there, essentially, and we're looking for defer of any tap connection or other impact fees, and a waiver of any permit fees, and when we get to closing, you know, a year or so from now, we will need an Altus survey and a title commitment.
Okay.
And just going, going through our team, we have, as our architects, she's in Zuzo's, which we spoke about, they're, they're the MFA consultants, as well as, you know, as well as guys that we've done other deals with, our general contractor that we'll be using is Bridgeview, that we've been working on these numbers, as well as the buyout in reference to the construction with them. The, our civil engineer is Scott McGee, he's based in Albuquerque, New Mexico, but he works throughout the southern part of the state as a civil engineer, knows the, knows the environment, we've already had a call with him, and as well as staff, and we look at either a gray star, or we've used a couple other local property management firms that we work hand-in-hand with, that's not locked in stone, but this is one of our partners that we've done a lot of projects with on the, on the property management side, but we, we do look at finding local talent in a lot of these locations, as long as they're big enough to be able to handle, handle the, and they're, they have the infrastructure to be able to do the audit work that's required for the affordable housing side on the management side. This is one of our site plans from another project of ours, just an aerial view, inside, inside a master plan outside Albuquerque, that we are just finalizing right now, we wanted to show it to you, it's called Encanto, three stories, three hundred eighteen units, it's a bond finance deal that we're, that we're doing, and it's a, it's more of a mid-range workforce type of product, and it's a great, it's a great project. Some other projects, this is with the site plan from Encanto, so we have this similar type of total wrap, you know, for the site, coming off of Bobby Foster and University, and we, we had to do some things here to manage the master plan. This is our interiors, we wanted to show you what interiors would look like on our, on the rendering basis for this, this product that we're doing, and the finishes. The one that we're going to be doing, that, like, hopefully it all works out, the one that we're going to be doing in your village, will have similar type of projects, but more of a, more environmentally soft, I would say, feel as you walk through the space, you don't have as much modern type of look to it, because it's more, we try to match the environment that we're in on the rental, rental side, so there's no difference between our, our units and what you would call market-rate units. I think that's it.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Yeah, and I think the one thing that the, and I think you've done a good job preserving the, the environment around this, I, I do think that there'll be, the more we can protect the trees that exist out towards Meacham, and the ones towards the walking trail golf course will probably be key, it looks like, especially on the golf course side, you did a terrific job of that. I appreciate the, the focus on trying to make them look as much, you know, similar to, you know, mountain-type properties and those type of things, because that's definitely the environment, I think the community, the more we can do that and enhance them that way, the more receptive the community will be about that, and I also acknowledge that, yeah, especially when you look at the density of the Encanto product compared to what you're doing here, it's obvious that y'all are taking in consideration the, the space and the natural features, and you're not overbuilding, and I guess we'll use that word, or putting too high of a density in the area, too, so, that's my thoughts. Does anybody else have any other comments you want to make?
Not necessarily to the developer, you know, maybe him as well, too, but we are, we are so in need of this type of housing as well, but we still are in need of workforce housing, so hopefully at some point, you'll be looking at that stuff, too, that's, that's what I'm very concerned about.
So, so that's a great question, James, the biggest thing that we, that attracts us initially to the markets is what I would call the affordability component, because that gets us into a new market, but once we're in a market, we essentially parallel to other types of environment as we know, when we, as we see absorption. Once you're in a market, it's easier for you to be able to pivot to a different type of product type, and what I would call workforce, more market-rate type of projects, we pivoted to, and we have a couple other types of products that we could bring to, you know, to your, to your village. It all depends on when we get in there, like, really get in the hands there, because that data is needed for on-the-ground, because we got to convince the lenders, I mean, the financing really drives that aspect, to be able to open a new market for us to be able to go into.
Thank you, Seth, and that's great news as well, so glad that you guys are still interested.
All right, any other comments from the committee members?
I think it looks really good.
I don't know if they can hear you.
I think it looks really good. I like it.
Thank you.
All right. Then, are we interested in a motion to, for, to, and this will be to submit the, our approval of this moving forward to the, to the council?
Mr. Chairman, staff recommendation is to make a recommendation to approve the request in the project participation agreement for the land and cash for the affordable housing development, as stated.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion as stated by Director Dodge.
Thank you, Nathan. Do I have a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion from the committee? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposition?
Um, Chairman, I'll go ahead and take a roll call, since we have so many on this end.
Oh, sorry. You just don't want to take it as a, as a, okay. Thank you, Samantha.
Real quick, sorry.
No worries.
Chairman Overhill?
Aye.
Member Brooks?
Aye.
Member Russ?
Aye.
Member Alred?
Aye.
Member Keenan?
Aye.
And member Thomas.
Mr. Chairman, and just for clarification under the, with the open meetings act, when we're doing the virtual meetings, it calls for a roll call vote. Otherwise, we would have been able to take it if everybody was in person.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Your motion passes. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you. We look forward to work, continuing to work with you and Mesa. I think this is exciting. I think it's definitely going to be the first step to us trying to address this crucial need in our community. So, next on the agenda is public comment? Are there anyone for a public comment? Seeing none, is there anything further from the committee? Then we will consider this meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank y'all.